So I think we should go ahead and get started. So, welcome. Do we have any regular session? We don't have any regular session stuff today. Okay. All right. It's okay, I'm just looking. So I'm gonna call together, call together, call to order the fourth budget work session for today, which is Wednesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. As of right now, all members are present in the Nat U Hill Room. And we will go ahead and move on to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's regular agenda? Seeing none, then we will consider it approved and move forward. Welcome again. And as I said, we're in day four, and I just want to remind everyone that this is not a final approval of the 2023 Monroe County budgets, nor is it a formal budget hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October fourth at five thirty PM. And the budget final adoption will occur Tuesday, October eighteenth at five thirty AM. The public can make comment regarding a budget during those meetings. Departments will be invited tonight here to join us in the Nat U Hill Room or virtually on Zoom. And they've been allotted an amount of time for their budget review based on last year's presentation time. As always, the council can extend that time if needed, but we need to be mindful of the time and keep our discussion to the budget reviews. Departments, within your allotted time, please explain any increases, decreases, or additions to your budget. This will be followed by a brief time of questions and answers. And council will have the opportunity to make any recommendations to increase or decrease or any account lines based on that discussion or the needs of the department. Again, it's not a final approval of the budget, but it is a recognition of the requests as presented or amended by council. Do we have any updates to the budget numbers based on changes from last session? That we want to talk about?
I have not actually had, I know that Michelle updated all the numbers on the four B. And honestly, I have not had the chance today between work and fighting traffic to get here, just barely on time. But I haven't had a chance to go over it yet. So I apologize.
I will say that on the Form 4B, I updated the aviation based on the reductions made last night. So that was updated. And then there was some changes with regards to the general fund, where there was some reduction in the public defender. And that was based on that that mix up that we had. So that was the only changes. So there was just the two reductions in general, just slight. And then the a little bit of a reduction with regards to aviation.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from other council members? Then we will proceed and we are at item number five on the agenda, which is the Coroner's Office. And Ms. Stalkup is going to be joining us via Zoom. There you are.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review Fund one thousand zero 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 seven, General Fund Coroner. Category requests of one hundred fifty-nine thousand sixty-two dollars in the personnel category, nine thousand five hundred dollars in the supplies category, two hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars in the services category, for a total of four hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Stalkup. Would you like to tell us a little bit about anything in your budget before we go to questions?
Sure, I can go over it a little bit. Good evening, Council, and thank you for your time this evening. The main increase would be in my autopsy line. The pathologist that we employ over in Terre Haute is raising his fees. As most things are raising these days, so is his fees. They're trying to get in a second pathologist to help him out. This year has been quite busy. So that's the largest adjustment that I I see on my budget that needs to be made. So if you have any questions, the rest is self-explanatory. Office supplies, obviously, supplies have gone up in price. Fuel has gone up in price. I think I tried to keep my my transport line pretty close. I just increased it five thousand dollars to kind of accommodate for some of the fuel. So yeah, I'm open for questions.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions to my left? No comments or questions on the yes, Mr. Iverson?
Johnny, thank you for joining us today. Really happy that you're able to come to us via Zoom. And my question is that of autopsies. And I know that you have some data regarding the impact of substance use disorder deaths in our community. And I wanted to know, you know, as the cost of autopsies rise, are we also seeing an increase in the number of autopsies we need to be ordering?
Yeah, so over the past year, we have, well, this year, our autopsies have increased, I would say, by twenty-five percent. Toxicology line, as you see, stays relatively the same, and that's because it's funded. If it's a clear cut, we know that this is going to be a overdose death. This Indiana State Health Department pays for that toxicology testing. So that is separate from autopsy. Autopsies do not include the fee of having toxicology testing. So everyone that goes for an autopsy also gets tested, and the prices of toxicology have went up as well.
Okay. And then my my second question is, I know that during the pandemic, we had an issue with storage, and there were times where you were needing to drive around the community looking for additional space. Are we still having those type of constraints?
So with the new hospital opening up, it also opened up extra space. They enlarged the size of cooler space when they made the morgue in the hospital. That doesn't mean the county isn't in need of its own morgue. I still believe that's true. That's for another session. But right now, the hospital has enough space that we have not ran into an issue yet.
All right, well, let's hope it stays that way. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? No? Okay. Um, all those in favor of accepting the Coroner's General Fund Budget request, say aye.
Aye.
opposition, say nay. Motion has passed. That concludes your budget session, the coroner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
And then we move to six.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review Fund one thousand zero eight zero three, General Fund Parks. Category requests of one million two hundred six thousand three hundred twenty dollars in the personnel category, one hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars in the supplies category, two hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in the services category, nineteen thousand dollars in the capital category, for a total of one million six hundred nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars.
Second.
All right. Ms. Whitmer, do you want to come up here? Welcome. We're not scary. Come on up. I can relate. I'm not sure. Try out your microphone. Last night that one was having some issues. Make sure you got it green. How about mine? It's green. Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Everything good? Now I gotta put my glasses.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Kelly Whitmer. I'm the Director of Monroe County Parks and Recreation, and this is Stanley.
Stanley Robertson, I'm the Assistant Superintendent.
And what would you like for us to do first?
Well, it's the general fund. Any, any changes that are in the, any difference from last year? If you could highlight those for us, that'd be great.
Excellent. We'll go through supplies first, then services, and then personnel, if you don't mind. Oh, already. Fuel, we're asking for ninety-one hundred dollars as an increase of three thousand seven hundred. This is for fuel at the highway garage for our vehicles only. We calculated the math. It is what it is. We have more items. We're driving more. We have equipment that, you know, needs to be driven around. So I don't know where else to go on that. And the park board is very concerned about our fuel. The next one, and this is a big one, twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars for the cars front part, gas and diesel tanks. This also includes our oil, our moods, our filters, which is around four thousand dollars. We have two five hundred gallon tanks, one's gas, one's diesel. It operates everything that we do. We've calculated how many gallons we use. That's the number. The next one is recreation supplies. We talked about this last year. Thirty thousand dollars would be to replace soccer goals, seven thousand dollars. It's just our regular recreational programmed balls, things like that, nets that we normally buy. Last year, you gave us, I believe, around twenty-eight thousand dollars. We bought four, four sets.
Yes, four sets of full-size soccer balls.
And we're just continuing buying a little each year, each year, each year, so we can like replace all of them. We're just asking for six hundred dollars more institutional, and basically that's toilet paper, paper towels, sanitizer, trash bags. Everything's increased. Horticultural supplies, we're asking for additional four thousand five hundred. Basically fertilizers up about fifteen dollars a bag. And seed is now up anywhere between seventy to ninety-five dollars a bag.
Which is over a hundred percent price. Two thousand one. Yeah, sorry. And that's over a hundred percent increase than the two thousand one price.
In in our contractual, we're asking for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That does sound like a lot, but we have a one-time expense, the car's caretaker's house for fifty thousand to replace the roof, the siding, the software, the gutters. We have an annual rec desk software fee of two thousand that has all of our shelters and recreational programs that go through that. We have our annual fee of Trailhead Outer Spatial. That's five thousand. It's an annual mobile application fee. So if you want to go see a trail or a park, you can download this and see where you're at. And City of Wilmington also uses it, so we're picking back in together, so people aren't confused of where to go. We have on calls. We're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars. That includes what's over there, Cooper James Engineering, Bloomstone Tree, V Tech Security and Fire, Cassidy Electrical, that does our athletic lights, and other venues. Twenty-five does not go a long way, but our retainer, we don't need them. Yay. We have annual park projects, thirty thousand dollars we've calculated to correct drainage and parking lot issues at Cars Front Park. Improved ADA exit routes and ADA areas. Thirty thousand doesn't go a long way, but at least we can get little projects out of the way. Professional services were decreasing by eleven thousand dollars, because most of the projects that we're doing require a contract. So what's remaining from fifteen thousand, we would have, if we have an emergency plumbing or emergency air conditioner or heating or a pump that we may need, that's what we'll delve into that fifteen thousand dollars. Greenway Professional Services is up five thousand. We're going to have two porter toilets, cleaning, pumping, tree trimming, removal, asphalt maintenance, stone for the shoulder, and anything else that we need to buy to keep the Greenways safe and usable. The utilities, we're asking for six thousand dollars more. Our utilities in twenty twenty-one was fifty-two thousand two hundred. We'll make up the rest in our non-reverting, but utilities like anything else, especially water. You probably all know this, the ability can increase the water, so that's what it is on that. Equipment, we're asking for nineteen thousand dollars. This is to replace two Ferris mowers, which this includes a trade-in. This price is a bargain. This is the best price I've literally ever seen. This price is a bargain. This is the best price I've literally ever seen in decades. So it's really wonderful that they're working with us locally. We try to buy locally with every single thing that we do.
Yeah, on average, right now, a single mower would cost around sixteen thousand.
So it's a great deal. New maintenance technician up in personnel. We're asking, because we have an increase in maintenance activities and responsibilities, we have over five hundred acres we are in care of. Most likely next year, we'll have five hundred eighty-five acres to take care of and manage. We've been noticing that our hourly staff that we're hiring. That they do not have the skill set. Or maybe the work ethic that we require in a full-time person. We have four maintenance techs right now. And they can't be everywhere at the same time. One of them is a mechanic. God bless him that we have a mechanic. The other one is a turf expert that we got from Indiana University. That was a great hire. The next one is a carpenter. And the next one is an electrician. They know how to do a little bit of everything, but they're spread out very thin. We really need a new full-time person to help keep up with everything that we're doing with the greenways and the parks. The splash pad, you might be familiar with cars, it operates exactly like a pool. People think it's easy, we just know. We recycle the water, we do all the things that a pool does. So the public knows our water actually is probably the best water. In the state of Indiana, maybe, because we have a UV system that we use that we paid an extra twenty-five thousand dollars. In order to really kill all the little. Some stuff. That takes a lot of effort. We have twelve athletic fields that normally convert to thirty-five athletic fields, so we're painting thirty-five athletic fields. We also have a dog park, multiple greenways, parks, restrooms. I was going to tell you how many toilets we have, but it's so many that. And how many buildings that we're operating in maintenance buildings. So if you think about all the things that you do at your home, now do it on five hundred acres with multiple buildings, multiple toilets. You know, these are highly skilled things. We also have equipment that costs a lot to operate. This gets here, and we just don't let anyone drive our equipment around. They have to be highly qualified. Plus, what you may not know is that our staff does snow plowing in the winter. And that's not easy. They're up at midnight, six AM, plowing the youth jail. Dispatch. Oh, those on community corrections commissioners.
Voter registration.
Registration, the shower. Substation, and then only then, if we have time, we go and do the parks. If the parks aren't plowed, we make sure we actually keep them closed. Because we might have to redo all what I just said in the next hour. So people may not realize that our crews are out there during the winter doing all the snow plowing and such. And it usually takes a two-person crew on that because of, it's dangerous.
And with more of our parks being linear parks with more of the greenway trails that we're. Adding on, it's harder to maintain seasonals. Because you can't send them off to go to a project that's ten miles away and not have somebody with some sort of authority there to. Make decisions, make the right call, keep them on track, and so on and so forth. So. That is a big part of the reason why we would need another.
We have noticed the applicants for the maintenance technicians are highly qualified. So we've been very lucky to have a nice applicant pool in that. Are there any questions? We went through a lot.
Thank you. Are there any questions to my right? And Mr. Iverson?
Thank you for being here tonight. And down in the threes, I was glad to see that there was a. A line there for drainage on the fields because I know that the folks that talk to me about our parks just absolutely love. Trails. They love our parks. I think you're all doing a great job. And the one thing I hear about is how, you know, soccer fields are wet all the time. So it's good to see that. And I just wanted to know, like, what should I be talking to folks about what you all are doing out there? And how are you addressing that that issue?
Every year, we try and go through, take one field out per year. This is a new project we've been doing for the past few years. We take one field out and do with with our budget as much as we possibly can. To fish, fix any issues that we have for that field, let it rejuvenate. And it's been really prosperous because having better grass means it drains better and all these other issues. And also with. The addition of having them out for a full year, because it takes up to six months to reestablish grass growth. So it gives us an opportunity to do more that needs to be done on the fields for the drainage that you can accomplish. And just the small winter months that they do not have a soccer season going on.
Now, one other, one other thing is, it probably has been determined we need new drainage and irrigation on most of the fields. That does cost a lot of money, and so we're doing what we can without having a. Half a million dollar project come across your desk.
Well, that's appreciated, and I I'll convey that message when folks talk to me about. Why their kids can or cannot play soccer, or whatever happens, but I'll I'll know you're working hard on it.
And if, and honestly, if we have a rain event, we do have to cancel. Because once the grass is gone, it's, it doesn't reappear the next day. It's going to take six months to eight months, so we have to weigh. Do we want to have no grass? Or do we want to have a nice grass and they can play maybe another day? And plus, we have a clay base, so think of a clay pot, put the water in the clay pot. There it is. We don't have the best soils.
Yes, and over the years, our drainage has been slowly filling in just because of the style of our drainage system, because it's so old. Since, like she said, it's takes an extreme amount of money and time to completely convert a field back to its, you know, former glory. But we have been doing our little parts that we can as as we go along by trying. Fix those problems with what we have.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was gonna ask about the clay. I was, I, yeah, I've gone out there a couple times to look at things. When I've received a note from a parent, it is apparent that clay is an issue. In there, essentially what you're saying is, your your method is replacing grass with better grass. A field at a time, because it takes a year to get that filled back into rotation.
Well, that doesn't fix the drainage and irrigation problem.
No, and again, we it'll give us an opportunity if there are like dips in the field, that hold water more, we can add dirt. Get it appropriate aeration and then grass growing on top, which will help divert the water appropriately. So it doesn't saturate the fields and goes towards the drainage, so it can do its job.
Because because with drainage, it fills in over time. And once it fills in, the water doesn't move anymore. It sets on top. So at some point. At some point, someone may want to, because if we do drainage, we replace the irrigation at the same time. Because why tear up the field twice? We have very old irrigation. And the companies that sell our parts are going out of business, or we have to find them on eBay. So at some point, at some point in the future, we're going to be pushed into getting different irrigation. When you do that, you might as well do the drainage, but now we're talking about, you know, quarter of a million dollars, at least for two fields. At least, and you should do two fields at a time, or the price is astronomical.
Yes, thank you very much.
Questions to my left?
On the, on the capital item, so you've already identified the mowers that you want to buy?
Yes, and we're already in a program, and we all have the two mowers that we'd like to trade in. And that's how we want to do things. We want to trade in a mower before they have to tow it away. And we're hoping four to five years for each mower, except the athletic mower might only last three years, but that's not in this conversation. So yes, it it's two mowers with two trade-ins.
I I guess my question is, what, if you've already identified the ones you want, why don't we do an additional appropriation this year? And take it out of the of the budget for next year? We've done that in the past when you already have some equipment that you've.
Well, if you would like us to do that, we'd be more than happy to come back.
I mean, that seems to make make sense to me. Get in the queue at least to get your to get your mowers.
I think it sounds like a wonderful idea.
Right, exactly. We've done done that in the past. So counsel, I move, we set line four zero 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 one, equipment to zero.
Second.
Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor of setting the line two zero as stated by Council McKim, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And I know that there's going to be, I I believe that that at least that those mowers are probably in. A future commissioner's proposal for a bond as well. But but I mean, this this is the sort of thing that you need it now. Let's just, let's buy, let's spend cash on it.
I agree.
Yeah, but the longer we wait, the more money we have to put into the mowers, because they're at the point where things are starting to fall apart on them. So it's will cost more to keep them.
I know, I'm just imagining a little trail of nuts and bolts as you.
We're not there yet, but we're working on it.
And most of our mowers are five days a week. They're out there six hours a pop and. Do the job, and we buy locally.
So, yeah, and I'm, I'm, I just think that the Monroe County greenways are absolutely world-class. I mean, they're, I think they're absolutely as nice as nice or nicer.
Very much. I really appreciate that.
Well-maintained, they're beautiful, yeah. And I'm so excited to, you know, even though the the Ellisville. Greenway isn't fully open and connected yet. People are out there all the time on the part that is open. Every time I go out there, there are now more and more people enjoying it.
We're we're hoping the Cars Farm Greenway all the way to Ellisville. Should be open mid-October, hopefully. So I've been seven point two miles from Cars Farm Park all the way to the great city or town of.
It's very exciting.
Um, any other questions this direction?
I I mean, I know we we talked about the the position issue, and I know you've raised that issue with us before. And so the position description is going to be just another one of what you already have.
We want to concentrate on heavy equipment operator, trailer items. That would be my preference.
We know that we've been excited about growing our parks department. And we knew along with that would come a larger budget. That's just common sense, so. But as you were saying about the new position. If it's just going to be like your other position descriptions, I I don't think there's a need to come back to that or anything.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think we hit, I think that had even been mentioned, but yes, it's no change to the job description is actually needed.
Other questions or comments? All right. As you're, as you're adding to your maintenance staff. Are all of these positions directly supervised by you? How's that?
We have a park superintendent and a assistant park superintendent and all the maintenance. This is our assistant.
So yes, they would all directly be under me. And then on top of me would be the superintendent, below that would be all of our seasonals, which we would set them up like. If we need a team to go take care of some mowing or bush hogging somewhere, we'd send a full-time couple of seasonals to help them out. And they go accomplish tasks. So this allows us to have more qualified personnel to. Basically divide and conquer instead of having to, you know, be more of a. What's the word? More, it just, it just works better that way.
That makes sense. Well, if there are no more questions, we will go ahead and vote. All those in favor of accepting the Parks Department's General Fund Budget requests?
Wait, wait, we had a, we had a slight, we had an updated number.
Numbers.
All right, counsel. I'm going to restate numbers for general fund parks, fund one thousand zero eight zero three. In the personnel category, we've got one thousand two hundred six thousand, one million, two hundred six thousand dollars. Pardon me. Let me try this again. One million two hundred six thousand three hundred twenty dollars. And the supplies category, hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. In the services category. Two hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in capital category. We're going to go down to zero. That's going to be a grand total. One million five hundred ninety thousand six hundred twenty dollars.
And now, all those in favor of accepting the Parks General Fund Budget request, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, then we have to do the non-reverting.
Oh, gosh, that's, 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 that's a doozy.
Six B, the non-reverting capital.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one one seven eight zero 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 zero. Parks Non-Reverting Capital Fund, category requests of ten thousand dollars in the supplies category. Seventeen thousand dollars in the services category, thirty-three thousand dollars in the capital category. For a total of sixty thousand dollars.
What can you tell us about this one?
Well, this is very easy. We asked for asked for a sixty thousand dollar appropriation last year. We're asking for a sixty thousand dollar appropriation this year. We just rearranged some of the numbers, because a lot of things have to do with contracts. So you'll see that that number is higher. Other than that, we, the park board tries to keep this for, they might have to spend it on the maintenance building. A roof's falling off with the gutters, so that might be a forty thousand dollar. Thing right away, but the park board will want to take that to their budget if you guys can take the caretaker's house and take care of that. So that's probably what we'll be spending the money on, is another roof.
Are there any questions or comments?
And just for everybody's knowledge, all of the revenue for this comes from shelter.
Correct, correct.
And I noticed that you reduced the cancel or the refunds line, because you don't anticipate, I assume you had. A lot of cancellations over the last year.
For the COVID, right now, it's every, we're booked, so not very many refunds.
All right. If there are no more questions. I need my place. All those in favor of accepting the Parks Non-Reverting Capital Fund. Excuse me, budget request, say aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And that concludes your budget review. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to item seven, extension services.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand zero zero one one, general fund extension. Category requests of one hundred forty-one thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars in the personnel category. Seven thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars in the supplies category. Hundred forty-three thousand six hundred seventy dollars in the services category. For a total of two hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Second.
Welcome, um, miss, I'm gonna. It's oddy, but I was going to say your last name, Equola, Equola? Just push a button on the top.
Thank you.
Miss Equola.
So I am the county extension director here at Purdue Extension Monroe County, and we're asking for increases in a few of our line items. And the first one is for a part-time staff. We're asking for an increase. And this increase will help to support one full-time summer staff, one part-time summer staff, and a temporary staff throughout the year. Our second ask is for our contractual services, and this number is dictated by Purdue Extension. We are asking for a five percent increase. And just a reminder, our contractual services is an agreement between Purdue and the county. And so you guys are generous enough to give us staff and postage and facilities to work. In exchange, we provide different types of educational programs from agriculture, natural resources. Nutrition education programs, as well as like youth development. So we're just asking for a five percent increase. And we are also asking for an increase in professional services to about from eight hundred. And we are also asking for an increase in professional services to about from eight hundred sixty-seven to a thousand due to inflation. And we're also asking for an increase in our training and travel line item from eight thousand five hundred twenty to ten thousand. And this is also due to an increase in gas prices.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions to my right? Councilman Munson.
Hello, welcome to your first budget hearing.
Thank you.
I would like to ask about the increase in part-time staff. And can you tell us if there's an increase in four H personnel, four H members, or is this for other programs that you that you have?
Good question. So I do not have the four H numbers on me, but we do have constantly have young students and and children who are being involved in four H. Our staff was really helpful during the county fair. As you guys know, it's like the biggest event in our county. And so the staff was really able to help us during that time. So they're really helping during the four H, four H section as well. They also help with A and R and Health and Human Science Educator, which is the other parts of Purdue Extension. They do do a lot with four H. They're for the whole, our whole office, but four H does need more of the help because it is a lot of work doing different programming, different clubs for different kids. And so our staff did do a lot of four H work, but they do help out with other area, program areas as well. So it's not specifically for four H, but they do help out with a lot of four H.
And do you have an increase in four H members?
I do not have that number on me. I'm not familiar, I do not know, but we do know it's a very active organization. I can get back to you guys and ask my four educators, but I don't know if we have an increase or not. But I do know that we do have active members. We're having an increase in junior leader leaders and trainers and volunteers. And so I think it's very active. I'm not sure how much an increase we've had, but it's still a very active program that we do have at Purdue Extension.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Everson.
It's nice to see you again as your liaison. It was a pleasure meeting you, although it was interesting to get, we we met and then, of course, we got the email saying that you were stepping into the leadership role and didn't know that at the time. So I'm
I didn't either, so.
Glad to see you here. In in your personnel category at the top, the office manager is a new line at the top there, and it replaces what used to be the business manager. Can you talk a little bit about your leadership structure there at the extent in the extension offices? You know, who do you have reporting to you? And like, how does that all work out in terms of the staff there?
Yeah, so we have our office manager, and she is in charge of, basically, I call her like my coworker, my co-CED. She helps with a lot of the budgeting, a lot of four H, keeps things on task. We have our secretary who's education assistant, and she just helps to basically support our office manager. We have three educators. We have the A and R, agriculture, natural resources. This position is currently vacant, but we are looking to fulfill that role hopefully before the end of the year. We have a health and human science educator, and that is what I do. So I provide programming in the areas of family, food, health, and money. And then we also have our four H youth development. And they all report to me as the CED. So decision, financial decisions, all things go through me before they can have a final approval.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions to my left?
Ms. Councilor. Just a matter of curiosity, and I probably should know this. I've not been watching the plan commission meetings as much. Has that appointment been made? Because before it was the extension office director, and I think that's a part of that required position to be on plan commission, but I don't know whether it's like it could be somebody else in the office or has that been done?
Not not so far as I know. Maybe the decision's been made by extension, but it's not, nobody's been there for at the last plan commission meeting yet. Are you are you aware of who?
I'm clearly hear your question. I'm sorry.
Who who will be serving from extension on the plan commission? Since the extension office has a statutory appointment.
On the plan commission?
Yes.
I'm not sure. It would probably be me as the CED. So probably I would probably serve on the committee.
Would you say that that to have the a full house there on plan commission is essential? And it's it's something that needs to be happening fairly quickly.
It's extremely important. We just had, we did just fill, or the commissioners did just fill the other position. So we had two vacancies at the time, so.
And and, you know, you need to be there a while to sort of get caught up because it's a huge job. So.
Exciting.
Hello and welcome to Monroe County.
You're coming to get another job assignment. Other comments or questions?
I just wanted to say congratulations on your new role.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
It's great to have you here for a budget hearing.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything else? Well, welcome from me as well.
Thank you.
And I think I don't think I have any questions either. So let's go ahead with the vote. All those in favor of accepting the Extension Services Office General Fund Budget Request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move to the Health Department.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review fund one one five nine zero 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 zero. Health Department Fund, category requests of, in the personnel category, one million, four hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars. In the supplies category, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. In the services category, five hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars, for a total of one million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars.
Second.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcomes, Kelly. It's on the on the top.
It'll be green when it goes.
There we go. Welcome. Thank you. So not a whole lot of changes. Should I start with eleven fifty-nine? Yes, okay, great. So for environmental health supplies, there was a small increase to cover a requested leveling tool by the wastewater staff. A new line for wastewater apparel. The recommendation is two hundred and fifty dollars every other year. This would be covering specialty boots that are needed in the field. Small increase in the training and travel line due to fuel. There was a small increase in postage and freight due to the rise in postage and fuel. Recommendation of a two percent increase to IU Health for the public health services. I think those are major changes. Okay. All right. Are there questions to my right? Yes, Councilor Everson, or? Go ahead.
I noticed that equipment has been reduced from last year. You have no equipment proposed. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. And I didn't, I didn't see the the IU agreement in the in your budget. What what line is that, please?
Personal healthcare.
Oh. What's the line? What's the account number?
Three two four one zero.
I see it. Okay, thank you. That's all. We just wasn't tracking that. That's it.
Thank you. Council Everson.
Well, first of all, welcome to your first budget hearing. We're really glad to have you here in Monroe County. And, you know, this is quite a big department to be staffing. So thank you for your service to the residents of Monroe County. And I just wanted to go into your your ones, the where the personnel are.
Sure.
And I think a little while ago, we had approved a population health position, and I think that's the population health outreach manager. Is that correct?
That sounds correct, yes.
And could you just tell us a little bit, what does that what does that role do here in Monroe County?
Sure. So C is really just a lot of the education with regarding like syringe service, some of our outreach with mental health, some of those chip groups overseeing the the other staff in that department. But really, the big role of that is based with community education.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the only questions for now. I'll see what other questions come up.
Any questions to my left? Yes.
Trying to find which fund it is. I recall seeing something about you wanted to take two part-time and make one full-time? Or did you want to take the one full-time to make two part-time? I know we've done it. We just keep doing it. It's like we do it one year, think we have it fixed, then we do it again and whatever. So.
So there has been discussion, it is part-time hours currently, of combining that to make one full-time for better retention purposes. In addition, having the one full-time would allow that person to be able to assist on the office side, but also be able to do some of the duties out in the field i- in the event that that is needed at the at a certain time.
So may I ask?
Sorry, go ahead.
I don't have this open. I can't see it. It's too small here on the screen. In the the group for the that does the food checking, like for restaurants and so forth. Do you do, are those, do you have that fully staffed now? Or do you have vacancies or?
In our environmental health.
That the food sanitary?
Right.
Yes, so those are filled.
Okay, great.
And I just want to make a comment about, because she was talking about, you know, making, you know, combining maybe two part-times and this kind of thing. We have already talked, that would require a like a brand-new job description. So we're going to work together on that and then have to bring it to pack later for that. So it's not included in this
Okay.
request at all.
I just recalled an email discussing it, and I was trying to figure out if it was here or where it was.
Right. Well, I think originally Kenny, when she submitted that, had made that. But since having conversations with Ms. Kelly, we've decided we're going to go with different directions.
Oh, okay. Yes, go ahead.
So first of all, welcome and congratulations on your first budget hearing. So I did have a quick couple of questions on the services categories. In particular, the line labeled immunization expense for a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars, it looks like I seem to remember last year, even though it was included in the in the general, the health general budget, that it was actually grant-funded in some way. Is that? Is that correct?
Yes. So from my understanding, this was a reimbursement that we that we received from the from the COVID clinics. That's my understanding.
So so right here, it's listed as, I mean, it's listed as an expense of a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars in appropriation. So does that mean we'd be getting that hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars next year in reimbursement? I'm not, I guess I'm trying to, maybe the auditor's office has an idea. I'm trying to figure out how the money flows.
So from my understanding, the purpose was to keep this in the budget so it doesn't get lost in the cash balance. But to be able to use this to cover accreditations if we need to. That's my understanding. I'll have to look at that and get back with you. I don't have the answer.
Because I I just remember last year that when we did that big additional appropriation for immunization, it was actually even, you know, usually with grants, we keep them in a separate fund, but for some reason, this one wasn't treated that way. And I think there's money coming in for that. And I guess I just want to make sure that, given that there is money coming in for it, that it's appropriately reflected in the miscellaneous revenues. So we see, we see the revenue as well as the expense that.
I believe that this, I believe that we have received those funds, but I would have to double-check on that.
Okay, we we may, if if we can investigate that, we may need to come back and and address that, just so that we understand how that goes. Then there's also a line labeled software for twenty-five thousand dollars that is new since last year.
Oh, yes, thank you so much. So this was added in. This is something that we have been looking at for grant software. So comparing a few different software systems. I'm also trying to connect with one of the administrators in Hamilton County on the software system that they used. So the idea was to try to see if we could place that into the budget as something that we could use. That would be a startup cost. Most of the annual fees are around fifteen thousand dollars to keep that software year to year.
Okay. And are are you working with tech services just to to keep them involved in these?
Right, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to or comments for this budget? No? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the Health Fund Budget Request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review fund one one six eight zero 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 zero, Local Health Maintenance Fund, category request category category requests of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars in the personnel category, seven hundred dollars in the supplies category, forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars in the services category, sixty thousand dollars in the capital category, for a total of one hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. Second.
Do you have any highlights for this budget that you'd like to share? So there was a recommendation of purchasing two more vehicles in 2023. This was based upon a recommendation from the food staff and an additional vehicle in wastewater for their staff, an estimated total cost of sixty thousand dollars. Okay. Anything else? Just a small amount was added into the software line to cover things like the complaint database and the receipt program. Are there questions to my left? Yes.
And I apologize. This is a little bit peripheral to the budget. It's just it was something that just occurred to me because it came up earlier. Is the new system to manage septic permits fully up and running now? Is that? Is that going well? That was a big issue for a while, I know.
With the state, you mean?
No, I mean, with our septic permits, there at 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 one point, it was almost impossible to even retrieve septic permits because they were created in an old system that had become de-licensed and.
So from my understanding, they are still having issues, that this is something that we're working on with T S D, and that I've met with a few folks in the county about. I think that it's really the the soft, the system that's being used and having some issues with reliability reliability. But I do believe that that is not completely resolved.
T S D is actively working on it now?
From my understanding, yes.
Okay, I I'll I'll follow up with with T S D. Thanks. I know that's not really directly related. I just want to take the opportunity. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Peter Everson?
Oh, did you have a question? Could you talk a little bit more about the complaint software that's in line three zero four one? Is that for the septic folks? Is it for food folks? Is it, what what department is that in your in your area?
So from my understanding, there was a nerve database and complaint system that had record collection of complaint records over time, that trying to capture that data data to be able to then store it into new updated cloud-based system that we have. And this is also something, from my understanding, that T S cloud-based system that we have, and this is also something, from my understanding, that T S D is looking into.
So it would accumulate complaints going back into time, as well as new complaints as they come into the office?
From my understanding.
Interesting, okay, that's great.
Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Hello, um, I just, out of curiosity, I see the medical supplies from last year have decreased to $500. Um, I just, can you explain that just a little bit?
The, the decrease in the medical supplies? That's honestly, that's something that I would have to look into a little bit more to find out a, a little bit more information. My best thought would be that this would be COVID-related perhaps?
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up on that question. The, the clinic supplies and the futures clinic supplies, those are all grant-funded. So that wouldn't appear here in this budget, so any type of medical supplies for people using our clinics, that's not, that's not being cut. These are, these are auxiliary supplies that are different than that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Like harm reduction.
Yeah.
Type.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting the health, local health maintenance fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Indiana Health Trust Fund, please.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1206000, Indiana Health Trust Fund, category requests of $70,639 in the personnel category, $350 in the supplies category, $2,080 in the services category, for a total of $73,069.
Second.
So this really, not any big changes with this. This is just based upon a population formula and not any big changes that I can think of to address.
Okay, are there questions from counsel, comments, questions? Nothing on this one? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the Health's Indiana Health Trust Fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, and we move to the Public Health Emergency Fund.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 4906000, Public Health Emergency Fund, category requests of $10,000 in the supplies category and $10,000 in the services category, for a total of $20,000.
So again, not any big changes here, this is just money set aside for emergency situations.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Peter Anderson?
Do, as, as our community is dealing with cases of monkeypox, that doesn't come out of this budget, right?
No.
Okay, all right.
Did you second the motion?
Yes.
Okay, just, we didn't hear it down.
Oh, wow, sorry, maybe I didn't, maybe I just thought it.
Okay, consider it seconded.
That occasionally happens.
Yep. Any questions or comments down this way? No? Okay. And all those in favor of accepting the Health Department's Public Health Emergency Fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, and that concludes the budget review for the Health Department.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Before we call the next department up, I'm going to call a 15-minute recess. And we've had some interest from my fellow counselors in going down to the vigil that is taking place out front in the courthouse in recognition of the final day before SB1 goes into effect. So we will reconvene at 6:18, according to my clock. Thanks.
I don't even know if they heard me.
I think we're getting ready to go on TV.
You got to be louder. Okay, we're good. Can we go? Yes. I'm speaking into a microphone. Sorry to interrupt. Um. So I don't know how to phrase it, but I'm resuming our budget session for September fourteenth after our short recess. Thank you for your patience and we will proceed with the prosecutor's office.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand zero 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 nine general fund prosecutor category requests of two million, four hundred eighty-one thousand forty-nine dollars in the personnel category, eleven thousand five hundred dollars in the supplies category, one hundred twenty thousand five hundred fifty dollars in the services category for a total of two million, six hundred thirteen thousand ninety-nine dollars. Second.
Welcome.
Thank you, Erica Oliphant, Monroe County Prosecuting Attorney. I have with me my executive director, Beth Hamlin. There are a few, sorry, there are a few changes that we've requested for two thousand twenty-three. First, we are asking for slightly increased percentages of the victim assistance salary to be paid out of the county general. This was necessitated because we had a slight decrease in federal funding out of the VOKA Victim of Crimes Act. Nationally, all VOKA recipients did become impacted by a funding decrease. We anticipated that we would receive a thirteen percent decrease in our VOKA award. And though the our budget hasn't been finalized, it does look like we're getting a smaller decrease, a smaller loss than we'd anticipated, which is good. They did cut our travel funding entirely, but rather than try to move that to county general, we are going to elect not to send our victim assistant staff to the National Crime Victims Training in two thousand twenty-three. Just as a reminder, the victim assistance program serves as the main point of contact with the prosecutor's office and the primary source of information for victims of crime. Moving along, you may notice a change in our office administrator line. We had a couple of employees who elected to swap positions. One of them was eligible to retire, but elected to stay with us and just wanted to change the scenery. So the office administrator and the pretrial diversion director swapped places and the office administrator, the current one, is a fourteen-year employee and the former one was a twenty-five-year-old, a twenty-five-year employee. So that that's what that difference is about. You may notice we have lines one, three, zero, one, five, and one, three, four, two, five, entered as one dollar. This is to allow us some flexibility in case our stop grant funding is insufficient to cover the county's raises this year. We're trying to avoid the need to ask for an additional appropriation in PS Lit. As a reminder, our stop grant funds, half of the salary for two specialized deputy prosecutors, sex crimes and domestic violence, and the other half is funded out of PS Lit. This week, we received notification of our stop grant amount. We made our two thousand twenty-three request anticipating a three percent raise. We will receive about four thousand dollars less than we had requested, so we may have that much shortfall. But we will likely be able to squeeze that out of our county general budget by moving things around. That's why we did these lines here. You know, we just tend to have some vacancies for turnover and that gives us that flexibility. The next thing is our full-time health dental and life self-insurance. Our request includes twenty-three full-time positions that were already in the fund as well as three partial positions. The four victim assistant positions are here because self-insurance benefits are not covered in the VOKA grant. Our new request for two thousand twenty-three is for our two full-time positions from the user fee fund, the infraction diversion program and the pretrial diversion program director positions are funded out of that fund and that fund is in danger of becoming insolvent in two thousand twenty-three. If we don't move the health dental and life, the revenues for two thousand twenty-three, you know, using two thousand twenty-two as a base point, we project that we would probably be short in that fund by about five thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents at the end of next year. And that's if our revenues and and everything stays the same. Another thing that we're asking to do is move for full-time adult protective services position, health dental and life from the APS grant to the county general. The reason for this is that the funding that we've received for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three barely increased at all from what it was last year. And so this is to kind of account for the five percent raises. Should we get them? You know, I would just like to remind the council that the county prosecuting attorney contracts with Indiana Family and Social Services Administration to operate an adult protective services hub and our hub covers Morgan, Monroe, and Owen Counties. It was established to receive and investigate reports regarding adults within the state of Indiana who may be endangered and as appropriate to coordinate a proper response to protect endangered adults who are victims of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. You know, they do home visits sometimes, pretty extensive investigation and case management. I do serve as the chair of the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council Adult Protective Services Committee, and I can tell you that we are doing some advocacy work with FSSA to try to increase the funding that the state is giving us. And we are reminding them that counties are having to supplement the adult protective services program. So I am doing some of that advocacy work for us at the state level. So the total positions that we're asking for health dental and life out of county general is thirty-five. We are not requesting any new positions this year or salary increases other than the scheduled step increases and the five percent COLA. And we are not requesting any increases in the twenties or thirties. So if you have any questions about the county general budget, we're ready for that.
Thank you. That was very thorough. Um, Counsel Munson.
Hello and welcome. Tonight, we have questions about personnel that I think you didn't mention specifically. And that is, there were three lines that said formerly some other account. That is line thirteen, zero, zero, one administrative manager formerly account eleven, zero, zero, two, and then lines thirteen, zero, three, three, and thirteen, zero, three, four. And these were formerly accounts thirteen, oh, one, six, and thirteen, oh, one, seven. And could you, were those were those accounts grant accounts and then you moved personnel over to general from grant accounts or what?
The thirteen, thirteen, zero, zero, one
Uh huh.
was formerly classified as administrative assistant. Did their reclassification overview of all classifications without, you know, changing the job description at all, they bumped that up to a different.
Okay.
And so I believe that the line was numbered.
Oh, it wasn't a different account. It was just a different line.
Yeah, that is, that is accounted.
Yeah, that's a count, right.
The other two lines I did not catch.
And this might, they're criminal investigators, thirteen, zero, three, three, and zero, three, four.
That's the same. They, 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 with the reclassification, they, I think, wanted to move all criminal investigators or all investigator positions into the same line. So that's not a change. It's not official.
Okay.
Or anything that's just based on that.
Okay, because I couldn't see that.
Yeah.
Because they weren't. Yeah, but thank you.
Yeah, I think it was line thirteen, zero, zero, five, where you mentioned, you were talking about the VOKA grant. And I just wanted to make sure that I was hearing you correctly, that you have set that increase based upon, you know, what VOKA was telling you, but there might be some wiggle, there might be some changes, excuse me, in what VOKA will be allocating to Monroe County. So do we need, do we need to make a change to that number or do we need to keep that number the same for now or?
Our budget with VOKA, with ICJI, hasn't been completely finalized yet. That might adjust a little bit, but it won't be significant.
Okay.
This will be enough. It's an increase of about five percent in that line, two percent in the director line. But it's going to depend on how the grant agreement, you know.
Right. And I guess that's why I was asking about zero, five, and not zero, four, because the increase in zero, five was so much larger than the increase in zero, four. And so, but to hear you say that the the change in the grant won't be significant.
No, it shouldn't be more significant than what I've got listed here.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Questions, Mela. On this grant that you were just now speaking of, is that for one year or how many years is that for?
The VOKA grant is a two-year grant.
Okay, and so I just want to make sure there's room in there in case we would, you know, change your salaries or something that we know that there's dollars in there. Do you think that's?
Yes, for two thousand twenty-three. I don't know what will happen in two thousand twenty-four. We'll just.
Do, well, sometimes when the grant has been approved, they they stipulate how much it's supposed to be. So is this grant something that you can change your salary if you need to?
With the, with ICJI or with us, county?
Right. What we're trying to make sure, what I want to try to make sure is that if we have a grant position that we think it's covered there, and then the following year, we've got to come up with extra money. That's not.
No, we should be fine.
We've had this conversation before.
Yes. Now, we've received the VOKA grant for at least twenty-five years that I'm aware of. And this new grant agreement will be covered for two years.
Okay.
So we should be fine.
Okay.
For at least two years.
Can I ask you a question? What, when do you submit your budget? So that you said you submitted it with a three percent increase. So when does that take place?
That's when, that's when I submit the grant application. I have to submit a proposed budget. And what I have done typically in the past is anticipate, because these grants run different than, you know, the calendar year that we run on, I calculate my budget based on a projection for the following year of a three percent increase, because that's sort of typical. So that's what I did when I wrote the application.
Any more questions? Yes.
I wanted to talk about the full-time self-insurance line. So at this point on the, with respect to the pretrial diversion program, we are now at a point where the pretrial diversion program, I know at one point in the past, you know, the pretrial diversion was sort of thought of as a cash cow. And at this point, it's so far not a cash cow that it doesn't even cover the costs of actually running the program. Is that, is that correct? And so, and I know you already answered this question to me, but why do we still want to do it?
Well, I'll turn to, I want to explain.
Sure. So there are two diversion programs that we run that are prosecutor-led, the infraction diversion program and the pretrial diversion program. The infraction diversion program is a program that diverts infractions, keeping people's licenses valid, keeping points off their license, keeping insurance from going up, those kinds of things. The pretrial diversion program keeps hundreds of misdemeanor and level-six felony cases out of the court's dockets. It keeps criminal convictions off of people's records and all of the collateral collateral consequences of conviction that can happen as a result of those convictions. You know, right now, we're kind of in a funny place because in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, not only was there a pandemic, but we've also made some community efforts to try to reduce the number of people who are arrested for misdemeanor cases. And so I do think that has impacted to some extent the number of misdemeanor cases that we've received in the recent years. I will say that I am always looking for opportunities to expand our pretrial diversion program to include more felony cases. But, you know, that's something where you have to work with some stakeholders and make sure that you're you're not going a little, the pendulum's not swinging a little too far. I will say, you know, the diversion programs, I think, are really valuable for for keeping, like I said, keeping things off of people's criminal records and making sure that, you know, people aren't paying their whole life for one, one bad mistake.
Excellent. It does keep a lot of cases from the court system, which frees up a lot of resources for court services. You know, the courts themselves don't have to hear each of those cases.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Then on the adult protective services, so we're talking moving four employees self-insure, full-time self-insurance to the general fund. What's the, since we don't, we don't have that budget here.
Yeah.
What's the, at this point, what's the, I guess, the surplus in the adult protective services? Is it, is it, are we just with these four, are we just now covering the adult protective services budget? Is there any slack? Do we need all four moved over here? Who we get away with one, two, three, what?
For the last several years, we have paid the part-time employee from the adult protective services, the data entry person who works about ten to fifteen hours a week, we've covered that out of county general. So there really isn't a surplus in adult protective services. It's a really tight budget. I do think we could probably move three of these positions and be okay in the adult protective services. I mean, if that's a concession, I'd be willing to make that. But I think that's probably about as low as we can go, you know, especially if we're looking at the raises that, you know, happily we're looking at. I just think that's really going to put a squeeze on us.
Okay. Like, I was just asking, because like I said, we don't have that budget.
Yeah.
As part of our.
It's not part of this process, yeah.
Are there any more questions to my left? To my right? No, okay. And all right, I don't think I, I think that answered my questions as well. So all those in favor of accepting the prosecutor's general fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Move to general child support.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review. Fund one thousand zero six six zero, general fund prosecutor, child support category request of, in the personnel category, one million, two hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars. In the supplies category, four thousand dollars. In the services category, forty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. For a total of one million, three hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. Second.
All right, thank you. So as you know, the child support division establishes paternity orders and child support orders and works to enforce those. They also help to reimburse TANF benefits that are that are received by parents. There are no changes to this budget other than the scheduled step increases and the proposed five percent COLA. Thank you.
All right, are there questions or comments on this budget? All those in favor of accepting the prosecutor's general fund child support budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We move to extradition.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review. Fund one one five five zero 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 extradition category request of, in the personnel category, six hundred nine dollars, for a total of six hundred nine dollars. Second.
Tell me about this incredibly crazy budget.
Yep. So this is a fund that essentially exists to help us get fugitives from justice who have gone to other states or counties. We rarely actually use it. We usually end up paying elsewhere out of county general or somewhere else. But, um, you know, we've had a decrease in the revenue and so the the request is a bit reduced from from previous years.
Right. Are there questions, comments, questions? No. All in favor of accepting the prosecutor's extradition fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And now we're at public safety lit.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review. Fund one one seven zero 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 nine, public safety lit prosecutor category request of, in the personnel category, one hundred sixteen thousand dollars, pardon me, one hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars, for a total of one hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars. Second.
All right. So as a reminder, this pays the other half of our stop-funded deputy prosecuting attorneys. We have not made any changes to this budget other than the step increases and the five percent COLA. Oh, we did create some new lines in county general, as you know, those one dollar lines to try to accommodate any overage we may have.
All right, are there questions on this budget? No, okay. All those in favor of accepting the prosecutor's public safety lit fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And now we move to diversion user fees.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review. Fund two five zero three zero 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 diversion user fee category request of, in the personnel category, one hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars. In the supplies category, one hundred dollars. In the services category, six hundred fifty dollars. In the capital category, five hundred dollars, for a total of one hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars. Second.
All right, all right, thank you. So the balance of this fund has steadily steadily declined over the years. In our infraction diversion program, the revenues are similar this in twenty twenty-two as what they had been in twenty twenty-one. So far, our pre-trial diversion program, the revenues are up about sixty-two percent this year from twenty twenty-one. But remember, again, pandemic in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, so those were kind of lean years for us. But but if we look back to twenty nineteen, the PDP revenues are down by about forty-four percent from from that pre-COVID year. You know, based on our projections, we anticipate that this year we will be in the black with a year-end balance of about eighteen thousand dollars. That's assuming that revenues and everything stay the same. With anticipated raises, as well as, you know, I told you that we had some employees swap places. Now we have a twenty-five-year employee who's taking over the the pre-trial diversion director position. We're not confident that we will be in the black at the end of twenty twenty-three if the expenses and revenues otherwise remain the same. That's why we requested that the health, dental, and life self-insurance for both of the full-time positions move to the county general budget. We did decrease some other lines in this budget to try to maintain our balance. You know, this this is a fund that's, you know, may going to need some help in the future. But I'd like to give you, you know, I went through a little bit of the benefits of our diversion programs, but I'd like to go a little deeper. The person who runs our infraction diversion program, that director, he on his own initiative decided that he would like to work with people who are referred to us with driving while suspended infractions, the citation. Before filing any charges, he reaches out to them by mail or phone or whatever contact information he has and lets them know that he's willing to work with them. And as a result, he has helped people understand why their license is suspended and kept three hundred and one cases from being filed. These are misdemeanor cases. We don't charge fees for that because there's not a provision in the statute. So that's three hundred and one cases, misdemeanor cases that never hit a court docket, didn't go through a diversion program formally, didn't generate any user fees, but was nevertheless really valuable to a lot of people, got some people licensed, you know, got some people to avoid some criminal criminal cases. So in the the pre-trial diversion program director, you know, that person is making sure that there is some accountability. We're not charging fees to dismiss cases only. We're also having people go through evidence-based programming. Sometimes we use the CGM and some other organizations in the community to make sure that people are getting some education, understanding the consequences of their actions, so that they hopefully are not coming back with new criminal cases down the road. So though these, these are not the cash cow that maybe they have been seen as the past, they're nevertheless really valuable to our community. And I would hate to see us have to do away with these programs. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions to my left? Yeah.
So I'm sorry, just on the on the cash balance, what what's your projection for the end of twenty twenty-three, assuming that we pass it as is with zero in the insurance line?
Um, if we were to, we were going to be at a negative five thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars if we didn't move. So this would add twenty-four thousand to that projected balance.
And that's even taking into account you reducing the services by five thousand dollars.
All those other lines.
Yeah, okay. And we really are on the bubble.
Counselor Munson?
Yes, thank you for talking about the the value of this program. And I'm concerned if this program is going to continue to have a lower budget every year that that it would be important to transfer the personnel to another budget, to general fund or PS Lit. And to use this fund for supplies, services, and and capital. And just in order to protect the important personnel that are taking care of this program. And I hope you'll, I hope you'll think about that for for the future if your if your revenue continues to decline.
Yeah, I I think it's on our minds. I think we're going to try to do what we can, not to have to cost the county more money than we have to. But but these are valuable programs, so so we will keep it in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Iverson?
Obviously, there's, I think, consensus up here that this is such a valuable program. I'm really concerned, though, about the drop in the services, particularly the program line. I mean, that's a huge decrease. Is that going to impact the way that you are running this program in the current, in this coming year?
So the previous administration had used a lot of budget from that program line for some of the community initiatives that that he was involved in. You know, I, it's not going to impact the way that the diversion programs operate. You know, it impacts how I can go about doing certain initiatives in the community. And I'm, you know, trying to be resourceful and find grant funds and other opportunities where I can to to be involved with with some things like the high-tech crime unit comes to mind. And and, you know, we found grant funding to do our data, our racial justice and data project beyond what the county council allowed us to fund. So, you know, I'm I'm trying to be creative and find other avenues to fund those kinds of initiatives.
Well, that that being said, there are not a lot of prosecutors like you in Indiana, and I would hate to tie your hands. I mean, is is this tying your hands?
Uh, I wouldn't say that at this point. You know, you'll hear from me, I think, when I feel like my my hands are tied.
All right, I'll hold you to it.
Counselor Tucker?
Well, I I was gonna kind of pick up on that and just offer that as one of your two liaisons. And I've I've served with you for a little bit now. I always appreciate the breadth of knowledge that you bring, both of you bring into these these discussions and particularly that you give to your liaisons. I feel like we are rarely out of touch with you, and that's more on your effort than ours or mine. Counselor Iverson, that's a great job. I wanted to ask on the, to get to clarify, I think, really for the public watching, on that, the value example that you were talking about. What you were describing is the person that's driving along, going about life, and license has been suspended, and they're not exactly aware that meets them at the wrong time, complicates life. Your director's proactively reaching out to these folks to to assist them and kind of avoid that that classic thing I've heard people talk about for years.
Yeah, he's essentially doing some case management, making sure that people know why their licenses are suspended and also what resources are available. You know, sometimes there's thousands of dollars of reinstatement fees, and he's helping people understand how to petition to get those reduced and and other things. So he's really doing a lot of work. And this was something that, like I say, it was his idea. Driving while suspended is one of the most filed cases, like like the file crimes across the state. It's really common. And so, you know, I think it's great that we can make some efforts to try to, I mean, usually if you keep charging them with driving while suspended, they keep stacking up because people need to drive. I mean, that's just a fact of life. It's just the way that Indiana is built. And so, you know, I think that it's it's really made a huge impact on some people's lives, getting getting their licenses valid and and making sure that they're not going to keep coming back and it's not going to keep costing them more money.
Oh, I I just, I think that is a huge thing, and I I want to make sure that we didn't minimize that in any way. Because, I mean, it's just, and not to be anecdotal, but those stories stack up in a community. And, you know, if people should not be on the road, we don't want them on the road. But in cases where life then gets interrupted and fines and fees and and life gets more compounding, if we can avoid that, that sounds absolutely tremendous.
Yeah, most of these licenses are suspended because fees weren't paid. Or sometimes it's child support, and we can work to bridge them with our child support program and get them on a payment plan and then unsuspend their licenses. So it can sometimes get us some other good outcomes as well.
I actually have a question for one of, maybe Jeff, maybe Kim, just on, could some of these positions that that Counselor Munson maybe was mentioning moving, could they be moved to PS Lit?
I mean, moving to PS Lit kind of doesn't get us anything over moving to general. It's kind of six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Okay.
Both are are constrained.
Okay, it just has a higher operating balance, just looking at it.
It does, but if you look, it's still, it's still, I think, budgeted in deficit for the year. Not a lot, but.
Not a lot, no. Okay, just a thought.
That's my opinion. It doesn't really get us.
Okay. And are there any other questions or comments? No, already done. All those in favor of accepting the prosecutor's diversion user fee fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that concludes the prosecutor's budget.
Can I just take one moment to thank Kim Schell? She's just held my hand.
She's amazing. Yeah.
Call her today to work some computer stuff out.
That's great.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Yeah. Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Thank you. Now we will move to item ten A, which is from our auditor.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review. Fund one thousand zero 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 two, general fund auditor category request of, in the personnel category, one million, one hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars. In the services category, one hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars, for a total of one million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Gregory and Ms. Smith.
Good evening, counsel. So we have three budgets. Basically, the first budget we're going to talk about is our general fund budget. In the general fund budget, we had really wanted to move the half of a person who had been there for a long time in the general fund budget, but we had put her in plat books to help out the general fund about three or four years ago. We have moved her back at Jeff's request. However, that that person is moving to a a fund that might not be sustainable, but we'll talk about that second. So I just want to let you know. If you saw one that says we'll move back to plat book, that's line eighteen on this budget. Okay, and that's a long-term employee. She'd been chief deputy in the clerk, chief deputy clerk, chief deputy recorder, she's a very valuable employee. The other thing that changed is going down the list here in the order that it that it is. So you will see there are three administrative assistants, commissioners, administrative assistant, administrative counsel. There's really only two. We have the administrative assistant to the count, to the commissioners. That's line eleven zero zero one, formerly eleven zero zero two. And we have administrative assistant to the council, which is, your guys is Megan, eleven oh one three. And so eleven zero zero two will just simply be removed. I think it's still showing up in your budget. Is it, Kim? Yes. So it's going to just be removed. It's just a scribblers change for trying to align account numbers, if I remember right. Trying to align account numbers, correct? Okay, so the third change you're going to see is our request for an assistant county financial director. This person had been in our budget, been in for years back, and then for a long, long time, we had the same amount of people for, I don't know, twenty-five years. And then a previous auditor had cut two positions. This is one of the positions. Unfortunately, during those cuts, as as I spoke on when I came and talked to you about it, that's when we had the bad audits. That's when we had things that we couldn't trace. They couldn't bounce with treasure, it's time odds treasure, the auditor couldn't bounce. There was never any money missing. It's just their records didn't match our deposit records and our withdrawal records. And we got someone to come in and help us match that up and make the corrections on. And we got someone to come in and help us match that up and make the corrections on the, um, main, almost all of them are pretty much on the, um, on the side of the auditor, they're all fixed. We've been in balance every day through my administration and I am now in my, I hate to say it, sixth year, boy, time flies. As auditor, um, seems like I just got elected the first time. And so what we're trying to do is add back a position that is greatly needed. It's a 35 hour position. It can, it says it's 45,773, but because it's a new employee request, we're not sure exactly what it will be. The lowest level it could be for a starting employee would be 41,000. And it could go up to if we hired somebody who was in another department, came in with 20 year service, it could even be a little higher than this. Uh, but Kim, Kim fed in the midpoint range. So what you're looking at is the midpoint range for this new employee request. This position would be, uh, Kim's assistant, or no, Kim's assistant would be Bree's assistant. And, uh, they would do pretty much all of Bree's time now is spent on, and I know it sounds crazy, on audits and the financial report. Cause a financial report is no longer a report you do as a snapshot at the end of the year. It's actually, you know, huge and it's very overwhelming and it takes many, many people, um, and a contractor to get it done. It's honestly like writing a book about everything, single thing that happened in the county financially over the course of the year before. Three months into the year before that and the first three months of the next year. So it's 18 month window now. And there's hundreds of thousands of transactions. And we are still completing the, um, the county's AFR, um, which is the yearly financial report, uh, as we speak, and it was actually due March 1st. March 1st, yeah, March 1st. So that's just how large it, we're not the, we're, the other counties are in the same situation we're in. Because the state work account's still trying to set the rules. Is that, is that a clear, am I saying that right? They're, they're trying to understand the gas or your carment, so they keep changing the rules on us and we can't seem to get it done. Today, the benchmark for getting it done is a Friday. Of course, Friday, it could be the following Friday. It's been that way for we're hoping, we're hoping to get it done, but it takes all her time. So she actually has a job outside of all those activities that is pretty much. Um, I mean, things have to have, things have to happen. We have to get back to auditing or we're going to be in the same situation we were before. Not internal auditing, because internal auditing is compliance regulation. We're talking about day to day, to day to day to audit. And this new person will be her assistant and will primarily do accounting auditing and accounting work, just straight accounting work. They will not be on the high level stuff. They'll be doing that sit at my desk all day long and accounting and work. So that's what we're asking for. And, uh, the person, the person who did that previously was the third backup to payroll. And Angie has asked us for a third backup to payroll and we're expecting to train this person on that too. In case there would be something happens, somebody gets sick or two people would be out same time, we still have to process payroll. So that's been added to that position. Then you'll see, uh, pretty much nothing else has changed. The, the, of course, the self-insurance is just a, a percentage of, um, the the expenses for the county, uh, petered out into a per person expense, which I believe is $12,000. So 6,000 moved out, moved into the other fund. Contractual services, I had talked to Jeff about, he had asked me, could we decrease that to 150? And I'd said, yes. So we're, we, we, I hate to say we can decrease it to 150, we're going to try to decrease it to 150. It is a function of how long that audit happens and as you can tell from our dialogue, it has been very excruciating and very long drawn out process. So pretty much every penny of that goes for, um, paying for our Gatsby report. Now, do we have to do a Gatsby report? No, we do not. But if we don't, we can't bond. So this is a function of what bonds cost us. And I want to explain that. And so is a lot of Bree's time. Other counties have hired two and three CPAs to do this. And not, not had it outside firm. But if a person leaves, they walk out with that knowledge, right of? And so having a CPA firm to help us, to help her get the report together, because she has to get the numbers and then somebody has to compile all the, the data analysis. It, it doesn't make sense to me to go out and find some CPAs that might leave for a higher salary and have our Gatsby session, or Gatsby system crash and burn and us not be able to bond. Cause if I came to you one day or a future auditor come and said, we can no longer bond because we didn't meet our date, you guys would not be very happy with us. So we're doing every single thing we can to do three different things. One, pristine audits. Two, absolutely know where every penny of our money is and using it to the best of our ability. And three, to try to minimize the cost for you guys, because we know all these things are expensive. So that's our benchmarks and we take them very, very seriously. Other than that, everything else that I would say, except a tiny bit of postage, everything else, we're absorbing it into our fee-based programs.
Okay. Um, thank you. Questions to my right? Counselor Munson?
Thank you, Auditor Smith. I have questions about the personnel category.
Sure.
And, um, I'm going to address the administrative assistant dash commissioner. And the line right below that, which is account 11, 0, 0, 2.
Yes.
Administrative assistant. The administrative assistant commissioner, uh, 11, 0, 0, 1, has a salary of 51,730 dollars, which is the same as the 2022 salary for the administrative assistant in the line below. And somehow I think, uh, there may have been a cost of living change that wasn't applied there, or maybe there's a new person coming in and I don't understand the, the salary as it was applied.
I think in the notes, Kim has put increase of 22,600 dollars, uh, because it did not reflect that. Kim, correct me if I'm wrong.
What happened was the admit the new account line was put in for the administrative assistant commissioners. The administrative assistant line was not zeroed out. So that should have been zeroed out. And when I spoke with Chris, the chief deputy, he had put the wrong number in. So we talked and it should be uh, the commissioner's line should be 54, 3, 3, 0. That was just
That's what I thought.
Yes.
That's exactly what I thought.
Yeah. So I'd already made notes and, and put that in there. It's on you. And I sent you the, everybody, the spreadsheets with all those notes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just
I can't see what you're seeing.
Yeah.
I'm looking at a different spreadsheet. So, okay. So that's already taken care of?
No, we haven't taken care of it, but I, but I had highlighted it and read that we needed to do that tonight.
Do I need, do I need to offer a motion in that?
You can, or I'm, I'm, I'm ready to also.
Yeah.
But if you've got it in front of you, please go ahead.
Sure. Okay. I move, uh, we change line 11, excuse me, account 11, 0, 0, 1. The salary from 51,730 dollars to 54,330 dollars.
Second.
Do, do you want to simultaneously zero the next line now?
And simultaneously, I would like to, uh, zero account 11, 0, 0, 2, to, uh, the amount of zero.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on this motion? All right, all that in favor of changing the two lines as described by Counselor Munson, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Iverson.
Okay. Uh, I have, uh, questions in the personnel category as well. Line 17 for our economic development coordinator. It, that's a, quite a big jump from 2022 to 2023. Economic development is really important, uh, but I just wanted to know why it was such a big jump.
That's because there is a seasoned person in there. Um, the other person was on the lower end. This person is moving, is it 14 or 20 year? I can't remember.
Okay.
14. Yeah. So that's what it is. It's, it's because someone left and a, uh, another person with more experience has moved into that line.
Wonderful. That's a great reason. I, I have no other, uh, questions, but I do have a comment. I agree with you completely that, that, uh, Ms. Gregory is very important. Just the other day, she pointed out that I did not have access to something I didn't know I didn't have access to and needed access to. And she got me all squared away. So she is very valuable and I'm all in favor of giving her, uh, the help that she needs to do her job even better.
Thank you. We wouldn't ask it if it wasn't greatly needed.
Wow. You got, you got my vote.
I had a question. Can you tell me more? This is just for curiosity of me. I probably should know it better. The economic development coordinator, what do they?
I would love to tell you that because Jeff had the same question.
Okay.
And I answered him and he liked the explanation, but I'll try to re, re-say what I said. Okay. So the economic development count, uh, coordinator is not really what you guys think it is. It doesn't generate economic development. Okay. So economic development has multiple, um, facets. And one of the one is keeping up with the mechanics and the accounting of economic development. And that's what this position does. For instance, every time you give an abatement, that abatement's usually a 10 year abatement. So there's a sliding scale on how much taxes they pay. So every single parcel that that person has, it all has to be done by hand based on where they're at for, and, and it, you could imagine all the multiple parcels. Let's just talk about Cook having like 300 parcels, lots of parcels. And in addition to that, uh, things are in the TIF unit, uh, in the TIF areas and outside the TIF areas. So there's a lot of mechanics associated with that. And in addition to all those things, you have, um, you have property abatements, you have equipment abatements, you have all kinds of different abatements. And, and, uh, you have proposed abatements and you have abatement measurements on whether they get those abatements or not based on their performance. So there's lots of elements associated with that. And this person does that. Then they make absolutely sure that the, what we're taking off the property rules for them in, in that taxing unit is exactly right. And in addition to that, if you live in an economic development area and you work in an economic development area, there are also deductions for that. So I don't know if you know that or not, but there are. And so we have to, if, when people apply for that, we have to assure ourselves that they're actually inside the right unit. And that they do work inside the right unit. So we have to do a lot of paperwork associated with that and working with their employers to make sure they get that benefit. That benefit does not come from us. It comes off their state taxes, but we're responsible for that. Additionally, if you're a veteran and you've been, and you've been, uh, wounded or something's happened to you in the service and you have a service disability, you have so much, um, credit associated with that as well. So for instance, we'll just, I'll pick a number, we'll say it's $15,000 of, um, if, if you, i- if you say you don't owe any taxes because you have something in, you have an inexpensive piece of property and there's leftover, um, credit, that can be transferred to BMV on their license plates. So there's a lot of elements of economic development that, that, you know, because we want those people, right? We want service people working for us. Especially if they, if they've, you know, retired from crane or something and made good money, that'll help sweep into our county coffers. So we do everything we can to try to not just see that our deductions are right, but to assist the veterans, uh, to assist the housing group at the city, do everything that we can to make sure people are only paying the set of taxes that they are prescribed to pay by the state. Because many people do not know their deductions. Most people, like on their income tax, they have somebody else do it because it's easier than learning all the new rules. Well, the rules change every year. For instance, we just heard that the average house was over $300,000. Did we not hear that? Yes, I think it was. Okay. So, so if you're, um, say you've lived in the same house and you're elderly and you have a disability, right? Or you're just elderly, you could have both because there's two different deductions. If your house went up above that, just based on, you know, sales trending, you lose your deductions. So there's, there's so many elements that you guys really don't see that we're, this small group of property people are doing on the backend. It's not just figuring out the abstract, how much the taxes are, doing all the, um, settlements and getting home set exemptions on there. There's so much more. And so, um, so there's a lot we do. The economic development coordinator actually does some of the more complicated mathematics associated with those set of models.
Thank you.
Did that, is that the same explanation I gave you in a roundabout way?
Yeah, you were, you were much briefer in the text, but
In the text. It was
But yes, it was, it was a good and helpful answer.
Um, so
That's not what I meant.
I'm embarrassed to
My question.
To follow up on that, um, I think I heard you say that this person also, um, looks at the performance measures for the businesses who have, um, TIF property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I want to talk to that person because I have some questions about that. Um, so I'll get with you later.
It won't be today because he's at home with COVID.
It probably won't be this month.
Okay.
I mean, but it's on my list. It's, yeah, no worries. I'm not hunting anybody down. Don't worry. Are there any questions or comments to my left?
Yeah. I guess I did want to talk about that position that was formally split, uh, with plat book. So I'm looking at the 4B and gateway right now. And is that actually accurate? Cause, cause if that's accurate, then there's no way we could move that position back in, but I don't know if that's
21,521 dollars is what we have in there right now.
Cause what I'm seeing is a negative projected, uh,
That's right.
Balance at the end of the, of this, of this year.
Yeah.
What Sean, that can't be, that can't be right.
It is right.
You're going to have a negative balance at the end of this year?
Well, if we don't, it, it, okay. All right. Let, let's, let's say what plat book is. Plat book is a function of how many houses sell and the money that we collect for transferring their titles. Now, we've had a lot of runs and, and in the last two or three years, a lot of houses have sold. So we built up cash balance and we've taken expenses out of here. What we can do to see that there won't be a negative cash balance is possibly move, move some of those other expenses to the next fund, which is, um, auditors and eligible deductions. And our big expense there is the contractual services and we've been trying to use as much contractual service money out of that account as we can. We believe that we can augment, that we can try to, Jeff, do it for one more year for you so that you'll have something. And augment this, this 11, 81 with 12, 16. But yes, it's, it's the right number. There is only 21,521 in it.
I'm not going to make that motion at this point. I, I, I can't justify it with the numbers that I'm seeing. So I'm I, I'll just support it as is in the general fund for the moment.
Any other questions, Counselor Hawk?
When you were discussing, um, the job duties of the new position, and then I heard you say that you were asked to add a backup for payroll.
Yes.
Was that a part of the job description already that was presented to Wes? I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that we're staying on top of any changes.
What was presented to Wes was pretty much all accounting and that is really an accounting function. And Marty, you, you and maybe Jeff, maybe Cheryl, might, may remember Scott Tibbs. That was Scott Tibbs' position. And he was pretty sharp and he could do a lot of different things. And so we're hoping that we could find somebody who, who, you know, like Scott, was very motivated and wants to learn and was, will hopefully be looking for maybe a position higher later. So they're, they're hungry to learn and hungry to be part of our organization.
Listen, I wasn't paying attention. I was reading down here what you were saying. It's easier to follow along. Uh, I just wanted to make sure the job description is correct, that we have on file, that was presented and so forth. Or did we add this on?
Well, basically the job description is, is to assist her in every different function. And if everything were to crash and burn, Bree is actually responsible for pretty much everything on the financial side. So if both the payroll person, and I think what happened, it was the pair, the payer person was on, um, on leave. So if both the payroll person, and I think what happened, it was the payer person was on leave and the HR person was at a conference. And if something would happen and they would both be out, we would still have to process payroll. Honestly, she couldn't have done it as busy as she was with the audit. So someone's going to have to do it. We'll have to, we'll have to figure out how to get it done because it is a real need that's been identified by the commissioners. And that's what our job is. Our job is accounting on every different level. So we are not about to let someone go without being paid.
I'm certainly not saying that we don't need that backup person for payroll because no matter what else happens in county government, we have to make payroll. Everything else is going, payroll has to happen. So yes, whatever we have to do to make sure that happens. I just want to make sure that our job description.
What complicates everything is you cannot cross internal controls. We cannot cross internal controls. And because we're so short-staffed, we really are, we're basically landlocked. There's, we, without another person, we can't help. That's why we have to have another person. Because a person who can change a general ledger can't do this and can't do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that's where we're at today.
We've done that. We've researched this, you know, because Bree used to be.
She was very good at it.
On the internal control. So we just have to make sure whatever we do, we do it right.
I think Kim Shaw has something to say.
Yes, I pulled the job description up and there's a statement. It says assist financial staff on accounting and payroll functions within Monroe County Government.
Okay, so that's a payroll function. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Appreciate that.
Councilor McKim.
Thanks. And I apologize. I want to ask what the, I know this budget is not the one in front of us right now, but it's it's related in my thoughts. What is, what's the contractual line, one hundred seventy-five thousand in the contractual line in eligible deductions for?
Yes, so basically in twelve sixteen, what we do is we hire a company called TMA. And I keep saying TMI, but it's not TMI. It's TMA, Tax Management Associates. What they do is they use all kinds of meta deep dives to find people who have, who are scamming us on homesteads. For instance, someone moves to Florida, they file for homestead there, they file for homestead here. Or they have a house in California. Or, you know, they, so they have to look at tax records, they have to look at employment records, they have to look at driver's license records. And you would not believe this, but people do have driver's licenses in other states besides just the one they actually live in. And so this is how, that company is how we have built this fund up.
Right, okay. So basically the answer is this is what generates the revenue.
We pay them their percentage. And Jeff Cockrell helped me negotiate a five percent savings on that contract, which worked out to be quite a bit. So we basically paid them thirty percent and they are very, very good.
Okay.
Very good.
And one hundred seventy-five thousand is an accurate estimate of what it costs?
Yes. Well, we're thinking it's going to shrink next year. So if you multiply that by three, by three, you'll know how much we think we're going to take in. But you see the cash balance we have today. So we're willing to use our cash balance to do projects like we did the, I was afraid we'd lose our lit, so I wanted to get that GIS cleaned up because they basically threatened me. They would take all of our lit away from us. And so we spent a lot of that last year on that project. That project is still ongoing. And this money that's in this cash balance, a lot of that is because they haven't billed us yet. So this money is already committed, but you guys can't lose lit. We would, we just couldn't pay our bills if we lost lit. So to me, that was the highest order expense for the entire auditor's office last year and it continues into this year.
Questions? Yes, Councilor Emerson?
I think I missed it. Who told you that we would lose our lit?
Oh, the Department of Revenue. So basically what happens is, right now we have GIS lines that go through people's houses and they're off and everything. And they can't tell who's supposed to get what because it goes on where you live. And so you have to have like a certain percentage accuracy, just like we do for property tax records and assessment records. We can be off five percent either way without being sanctioned. And so we have to fall within that sanctioning level. And they have given us a timeframe. But we wrote a plan saying we're working on it and this is how much money we've committed to it. And I just don't want you to think that cash balance, because it's four hundred and fifty-three thousand, a lot of that, a hundred thousand of that is for that GIS project and it's already committed. The contract's written. They're just working on it.
Other questions? This one? Other questions to my left? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the Auditor's General Fund Budget Request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
All right, I'm willing to restate it.
I adjusted the personnel as well as the FICAN perf, so.
Okay, I got you. Here we go. For, to restate for fun, one thousand zero 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 two, General Fund Auditor in the Personnel category, one million one hundred four thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. And Services, one hundred sixty-eight thousand. That'll give us a total of one million two hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars.
All those in favor of accepting the Auditor's General Fund Budget Request is stated so eloquently by my co-counselor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Counsel, I've moved to open for discussion and review Fund one one eight one zero 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 zero. Platte Book, category requests of seventy-nine thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars in the Personnel category, five hundred dollars in the Supplies category, two thousand dollars in the Services category. We're total of eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
All right. Thank you for listening to this eleven eighty-one fund budget, which is Platte Books. As I said, this has a very low fund balance. You will see that there's five hundred dollars in office supplies only because we have to maintain our Platte Books. And sometimes we have to purchase pieces for those books. There's many, many books. And so hopefully that five hundred dollars will be, will maybe not completely be spent and some of it can be retained. We travel and training would be for, associated with those Platte Books. We, as you know, as a surveyor makes a plat and it's, and a builder or a developer makes that plat that has to be inserted into our books. So there is some work associated with those, with those plat changes. I know Cheryl sort of underworks on this kind of stuff day in, day out. But basically, our Platte Books never get finished. They're only a snapshot of today, the way that county looks. Tomorrow, it's going to look different. There's going to be a split or a combination. So tomorrow's going to look different. It's very dynamic. There's not much changing in this account. And with what you've done with the account before, with leaving that person in it, these changes do not have to be made. So it's basically exactly as you see it.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Are there questions or comments to my left? To my right? Yes, Councilor Munson.
Could you explain where the funds for Platte Book come from?
Yes, sorry. I took my hearing aid out because it squeaked the other day and I was embarrassed because Warren and I used to giggle when he did that. Kind of made me miss Warren a little bit. But anyway. So what happens when you transfer a piece of property? There's two or three different fees associated with it. And we split the fees with the state somewhat. And basically, we capture, we capture the fees and it used to be per deed. So it was less money than we take in now. However, the state has changed how they do it and it's per parcel. So in other words, we have to adjust each parcel, whether you have a deed with twenty parcels on it or one parcel. So people used to cram that they had a lot of property, as many parcels on one deed. So we would have, you know, charge ten dollars for five days worth of work. And so, so there is, so there is a fee per parcel now. And the assessor can combine property, so it's one tax bill, but it remains different parcels. So the expense of mailing that tax bill out has shrunk, which is a good thing, right? But if, when it's transferred, especially if it goes from a, from a person who owns a property to developer, to builder, sometimes it's transferred four and five times in a year. If they do that, we've spent a month working on one plat and the county has paid a lot of money. So the other, the legislature realized that and they have upped the cost of this plat, this expense to transfer in addition to changing the structure. So two years ago, that happened. This is the second full year we've done it. And it looks like, well, why are we going down in money? The reason why is just the expense of moving the GIS person into this account. But the money actually comes from the, from the person who buys a piece of property. It is a fee. So why would the GIS person be in this account? Because that's going to be your guys' next question. So let me explain to you. That person actually is in charge of the layer that the auditor is statutorily responsible for, which is the layer that we have to be fixed and it has to be exportable, just like our law has to for property taxes. Everything has to fit seamlessly into the state's design now or we can be sanctioned. And so that GIS person mainly works only on plat splits, new neighborhoods, combinations, you know, subdivisions. It's a very busy position.
Okay. Okay. Questions? Any further questions? Questions to my left? All right. Although, wait, we have to change it.
Stay there.
It stayed the same. There's no change.
Can we move something to it?
Nope.
But the philosophy is for it to be self-sustaining with the GIS person and nobody else. That's the design of it.
Got it. All those in favor of accepting the Auditor's Platte Book Fund Budget Request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We'll get auditors ineligible.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review Fund twelve sixteen zero 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 zero. Auditors ineligible deductions, category requests of, in the Personnel category, fifty thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars. In the Supplies category, twenty thousand dollars. In the Services category, one hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred dollars. For a total of two hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred, pardon me, for a total of two hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, so this fund is basically a fund that is going to be, to really operate as the Auditor Services and Expenses Fund. All the money that I take in from chasing these deductions that are illegal and getting that money put together can be used for the Auditor's Office for whatever purposes. So I found when it started that I'm most comfortable in trying to cover legal notices because we have legal notices like for this meeting and all different kinds of legal notices. Travel and training, the contractual services is just to get the money. So you kind of have to skip that one. Dues, printing, office supplies and part-time work. And basically, all the expenses of the Auditor's Office, we're trying to pay for ourselves. Does that make sense? Other than personnel in General Fund. All these things used to be in General Fund. Like the expense of the TIF neutralization, FSG used to do that and that used to, you know, we'd come back with, when you guys, when something had to happen for additional appropriations or just be in the General Fund. So what we're trying to do is raise enough money in this account to cover all the expenses that are basically not personnel except part-time. And we used it to do the annexation work, which cost a fortune. So we ate that based on the money that, and she's no longer with us. It's Suzie Johnson scratched up and worked very hard to come up with.
Thanks. Are there questions to my right, Councilor Munson?
Could you please explain what is Auditor Supplemental TIF?
Neutralization. Okay, so the Auditor Supplemental TIF neutralization is a requirement by the State Board of Accounts and the DLGF that says we have to look at every single TIF parcel. Whether, we talked about the abatements, not the abatement part of it, but the actual parcel. So for instance, and I'll just use your house. Say we made a TIF place out at your house. You've got a farm, you've got a house, right? So your farm, you don't have that many improvements on it, just a barn, right? But your house is a house. So it would be probably two parcels. And then if you put a new swimming pool in, that would raise the house part because that's a new development. So the TIF money would be on that, any money that you paid for taxes on that swimming pool would go to the TIF unit. But if you built a house or you subdivided out another house on, like say you built one of your kids a house or your grandkids a house near your barn, that whole, that whole house, all the money associated, that would be, would be in the TIF. Now, so now you've got four or five different things taxed four or five different ways. So we have to neutralize that. And what we mean by neutralize it is we can't hurt the county by giving all the money away. We have to neutralize it. And what, her farm, what was that ground worth when she's got it in the TIF area? What's it worth today? Because the ground did not get improvement. The ground is still the ground. So we have to neutralize that ground to make sure it doesn't, that the escalation of the AV doesn't harm the county by giving all the money to the TIF unit. Does that make sense? All the money above what we call the TIF base. So we have to readjust, we would have to readjust every year the TIF base on your property, each different parcel that you have. And that's what that is. And it's kind of a, you know, complicated algorithm. And we used to have FSG do that. But they got super busy, like with COVID, and now they started doing more things. And the expense of doing it just kept going up. So we have somebody who does it, who's stuck at the price that FSG did like ten years ago. And so I'm very, very, we have more parcels in there. So we have, they charge us on a per parcel and that's where we're sticking to that per parcel rate. But that's to re-neutralize each parcel in every TIF unit. And we do that once a year and we have to send all that off to the DLGF and that gets subtracted out of our abstract. And that's done in August.
All right.
You're welcome.
Questions to my left? All right. You're good. So. All those in favor of accepting the Auditor's ineligible Fund Budget Request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And that concludes your budget review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I moved to open for discussion and review Fund one thousand zero zero six one, General Fund Counsel. Category requests of three hundred ninety, pardon me, three hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred ninety. That one's just, we're just going to need a second here. In the Personnel category, three hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars. In the Supplies category, one thousand two hundred dollars. In the Services category, two hundred nineteen thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. For a total of six hundred eighteen thousand two hundred twelve dollars.
Second.
Okay.
I'm just going to stay over here.
It's our budget. Tell us about it.
Um, there's just no changes. Everything stayed the same with regards to the personnel. We did hire an additional part-time person. And so that is reflected in the part-time hourly line. And I did, let's see. With the regards to the contractual, I'm accounting for FSG with a slight increase. We have budgeted twenty-eight thousand for this year. I just budgeted thirty just to be safe. And I also budgeted with WIS twenty thousand. And that, I went back and looked historically at what we had done and that's approximately what we've spent over a few years, not including the one where we had the large review of everything. I did increase the travel training and that's. Um, I did increase the travel training and that's due to, uh, we have several more council members that are attending conferences and/or if they're not attending them, they're requesting the virtual, um, ones, which also costs as well. So I've increased that. We did increase the Sophia Travis by the five percent and then we just rounded it up to an even number. So that makes that a hundred and sixty thousand. So, and that's the only changes with regards to the council office budget.
Are there any questions to my left, councilor? Kim.
What's your face? Thanks. I, I, I'm gonna actually make a motion to, that is going to be to increase, uh, line thirty-three zero three two BEDC to thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. If I get a second, I'll explain.
Second.
Thanks. So, so this is, so you remember that last year we, um, included the thirty thousand dollar BEDC support in the council budget under contractual, which led to some confusion because nobody, everybody kind of forgot that that's what it was for. Kim had to go, actually go back to watch the videos, I think of the meetings to realize what it is we do. So I, I definitely think it should be, uh, just for transparency's sake, should be under a line like BEDC. Now, in early, in formulation of the budget proposals, the thought was to put it in the economic development, uh, income tax fund, which I still support in principle. But after hearing both from Molly and from Jeff Cockrell about their discussions with Financial Solutions Group about possible bond anticipation note for the jail. He, I, I, although they didn't really go after the BEDC expenditure so much as the, as potential paving, it, it definitely may, and, and further conversations with Jeff made me realize that we wanted this to be as clean as possible for the, the, the revenue bond so that we don't have anything that gets in the way. And so, you know, with the idea that we'd be, uh, selling the revenue bond before the tax, we'd actually start getting the collections from the tax. So even though at the end of the year, there might be enough money for, for all of the above. We don't, you know, we're probably going to want to, uh, be able to, uh, pay back the bond before the end of that year. And so in order just to keep everything clean and to make sure that we don't have any issues, I'm, I would like to just move that money to, uh, back to the general fund. If at the end of the year, uh, we wind up having extra money, we could, we could, we do an appropriation, even regenerative expenses. Where, but I think, given that we're about to do this large, uh, revenue bond, I think it's best if we just keep that, uh, eat it, uh, budget empty. Oh, just the BEDC line. We already pay our dues out of that. I was just adding the thirty thousand dollars to the same, to the same line. Yeah. Thirty-five two fifty, that's the thirty thousand dollars in support and then fifty-two fifty is our usual membership. Yes. Right, to thirty-five two fifty. And then I'll, I'll make a motion when we get to the, if this passes, when we get to the EDIT budget to zero that out.
That was my question.
All right. Are there any other questions on the motion? All right. All in favor of increasing the BEDC line as described, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Are there other questions or comments on the council budget? Mr. Iverson?
I do. Uh, so, um, uh, for the contractual line and the threes there, um, you know, I, maybe it's just because I'm unpacked, but it seems like the WIS request just keep going up and we get, getting more and more and more. Uh, does, is twenty thousand gonna cover it or do you think you're going to come back for an appropriation?
I actually think we'll probably come back for an additional appropriation with regards to what we are talking about having done. Sure. You know, currently, because, um, there, I don't normally get a request or the payments until like after the process is done. So, um, this may leak over into the next year. So I, I would ask to increase it a little, that would.
I'd like to hold off on that though, in terms of budgeting, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I, I simply was curious. So I, I, yeah, I don't want to make a motion either.
It's okay.
I, I'm just curious. And again, just because, you know, from where I'm sitting, it just seems like I turn around and there's a new WIS request.
Correct. And, um, yeah, cause I, and I can always come back for an additional if, if and when I need it.
Okay, counselor Hawk.
Yes, um, as you might know, um, many years ago, I've worked really hard to get Wes here so that we would have something we could go by. But I do think that we, that we have to be cautious about every time we have a little question, we're calling them. Every time you pick up that phone, you're spending the people's money. So let's make sure that we've done as much of the research ourselves before we start involving Wes.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Yep, I don't mean to be stingy, but.
And Molly and I do do that. I mean, we, we try to, to gather as much information as we can before we reach out to them, so.
Right, and, and who do you, it seems to me that's, that the permission to reach out to Wes needs to be given, not just assumed.
I think you typically communicate with me about it, yeah.
Um, because I, I do agree that those prices could go up. And then the last, uh, message we got from them is they're swamped, they're short-staffed. And, you know, they can't do a lot of desk audits, et cetera, et cetera. So let's take that into consideration too, because if they're swamped, insured staff, our prices are going to go.
That makes sense, yeah. Counsel Iverson?
Uh, I wanted to ask about the part-time line. Uh, as we're sitting here, uh, nearing the end of our budget sessions, man, we've got one more night. Has that additional part-time employee helped reduce the workload, uh, in preparation for these budget hearings?
Yeah, she's been a tremendous help. I mean, I've been able to train her on some, um, some things and she has just picked it up and ran with it. I mean, she's very helpful. Um, I showed her a couple of things with regards to the website and she has been on that, uh, keeping it updated. She's really good with that part. Um, she's helping pick up the slack with regards to emails where I'm, I'm not being able to, um, respond to people timely because of the budget stuff. So she's been picking that up. She's helping me very, very well and I appreciate that. Yeah, she is very pleasant, I really like her.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? On this right now? All right, then.
We need to restate the, uh, services.
All right. So in fund one thousand zero zero six one, we have in personnel, three hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars. We have in supplies, twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred dollars. In services, we now have two hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred fifteen dollars for a total of six hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred twelve dollars.
Oh, turn, turn your mic on.
Was that right? I mean. Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor of accepting the council's general fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. To the next one.
Okay, counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund one-one-one-two-zero-zero-six-one Economic Development Lit Council. Category requests of, in the services category, thirty thousand dollars for a total of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, counsel, I move, we set line three-three-zero-three-two to zero.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
It's just the corresponding motion to the.
Right. Um, all in favor of, uh, setting this, uh, line to zero as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Of course.
Your mic's not on.
So generally speaking, we don't have that kind of thing in the council's budget. Have, have we determined that we can't just have a line that we are going to spend out of without? But generally, a department comes to us and asks for an appropriation and we vote on that. This, having economic development within the council budget, I'm just trying to make sure that we're.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I, we really, since we, since this is a new fund, we really, I see what you're asking. You're asking, will, will every department have a separate location within the economic development lit budget? Yeah. I don't know how that.
But we would still have to vote on it because we have to appropriate it. But can we just put it in there and appropriate it just? Whatever, it's, it's an interesting question.
I was going to wait until after and go ask Jeff exactly that same question because.
But now that it's zero, the point is at least temporarily.
You're right. Yeah.
It's a fair question. New, a new experience for us having this, this fund.
Indeed. So we now have a budget of zero.
Question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay, that's good, I'm hiding over here. Um, I just wanted to, to clarify, uh, with, uh, Mr. McKim's point earlier that we want to keep this fund clean in anticipation of, of, of a potential bond in the future.
That's my, that's my understanding. And I know, uh, Ms. Turner King has been working with Mr. Cockrell and, uh, Financial Solutions Group. So I don't know if you want to gloss on that.
Yep, that's correct. FSG is recommending that the easiest way to, that we should just keep it clean for the van capacity. Um, and what I also add in regards to the edit is, um, statute requires us to have a capital improvement plan and we're currently working on that capital improvement plan. So, um, using the edit for the jail ban will be included in that capital improvement plan.
All right. So do we have to vote to approve a budget that has zero in it?
Yes, because it's been amended.
Okay. Then, all those in favor of accepting the council's general, not general fund? Um, we're getting it, right? Economic development lit, um, fund. As amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that concludes the council offices budget. And do we have any other comments? Yes.
I don't know when the proper time to ask this question. Is, is this time that we can ask a question?
Yes, it is.
Because you're, before you recess.
Yes, it is.
Um, I know when I was going over, uh, some stipulations from the state as to when, uh, well, actually was looking at the, the probation salaries and when they had to bump, be bumped up. But it just brought up the question in my mind. Uh, are we, for instance, when our general rank and file county employees reach that bump, that date that they were hired, their anniversary date? Is that when they're getting that increase? Because there's, there's been, was there something that said, no, it's too hard for payroll? And so we just have to do it like all at one year? And that can be problematic, especially like, uh, when, when you do that and you say, okay, the first year, when you hit it, what, in July, you get it in July, but then from there on, we're going to do it first of the year. So then you've got this, I'm not talking about any one person at all, I'm just saying, theory. They could get that, uh, an increase in July. Let's say if it's, I'm, actually I'm thinking more like longevity. Let's say if they get that increase in July and then they turn around and in January, because it's the first one that they get it again, and then February, they leave to greener pastures.
I don't think it's handled that way.
Michelle has an answer.
And you're speaking about when they receive longevity?
Well, I'm, I'm also thinking about, uh, let's say if you get some kind of something because you did something great and you get that every year.
I thought you were talking about the step increases.
Yeah.
In general, when you have earned it, is that when you get paid or? For instance.
Okay.
It's supposed to be on the anniversary date.
When do these things change?
Understanding it's like it changed because it'd be easier.
No. So what happened is the effective, okay, um, they get their longevity. They don't get paid their longevity until after they've reached their hire date. But they get it within that payroll. So if, you know, within that payroll.
Okay, it's not like within the year.
No, so like if I got my, if my longevity was tomorrow, I would get it during that payroll period.
Right.
And that's when you also, you would receive your anniversary bumps is during that payroll period with regards to your step increases.
Okay.
So they just don't prorate within a payroll period.
They don't prorate.
With integration, because it says.
Like literally within a.
Yeah, to the day, literally it does.
To me.
But then, let's say if, and I, when I was looking at the assessor's budget, because they, they're not the only ones that get this, but they get some kind of, uh, having to do when they reach a certain amount of education.
Uh huh.
Then if they get that in, excuse us, July, because it's, the way it's written, they're supposed to get it as soon as they receive their education. Then they don't get it again until the following July or? Do I misunderstand? Are they getting it then at the first of the next year because it was easier for payroll now? Would, don't I dream that up? Remember?
I do remember that.
Yeah.
What? You think I dreamed it?
No, I.
No. No, what's, now with, with regards to that is just like your step increase, they get that for the entire payroll. You know, is what you're talking about. That was, that was because you were getting one rate, you know, like for four days. Um, you were a, a three, you were being paid at the level three, but then partway through the payroll, you got bumped to an eight. So, um, and I can't find it, but I, I know that it was agreed upon that if you got the eight at any point, you would be paid at the eight-year level for that entire pay period.
Like it was a two-week pay period.
Right.
Not a week and not a year.
Not a year's work, just that pay period. So then, okay, can it, but then you would move forward with your eight-year, you know, kind of thing, so.
Okay, let me kind of explain a little bit. So the, the longevity is the payment after the year that you worked that you accomplished. It's like a reward at the end of that year.
Right.
The step, the increase for assessors, we were originally paying it when they got the, in a lump sum, when they got their, their certificate and then a year, the next year on the anniversary of that. It is supposed to be a higher salary based on, a higher salary based on that certification. So there's different levels based on that certification. And so it's integrated in the pay. Kim, am I explaining it correctly?
Because last year.
It's a higher salary.
It's a higher salary. So for this year, if they receive a level two or a level three, they are compensated with a twenty-eight cent increase hourly, but not until they receive their level two or level three. And that's what was approved in, in the, because it's, I think, if you take twenty-eight cents times whatever, it was like five hundred dollars-ish, you know, kind of thing. And so that was, that had to be the difference, but I'd have to go back and look exactly what it was. So.
Do you remember the conversation that we're gonna do, do everything at the first of the year because it's easier for payroll? Yes.
I mean, that, that does sound familiar.
Right, but.
But, but we're not doing that.
No, no, we're not doing that.
I just want to make.
Right, no, that, when they, when they get this, they get it on their, at completion or, yeah.
And not for the whole year.
And not for the whole year, just moving forward.
I have visions of someone, no matter what department, getting it in July and then beginning in January, they get another bump up and suddenly then they, they're on.
No.
Or something, okay. Like I said, it sounds like that's, uh, probation has to be exact. Like I said, it sounds like that's, uh, probation has to be exact, but according to state rules.
Yeah. I, and I don't know the probation rule, so.
Yeah, and it even has to be like so many days of one, it's 30 days. Okay. Thanks. Just want to make sure we weren't. Are there any other comments or questions from counsel generally before we conclude this session? All right. Then we will recess until tomorrow, Thursday, September 15th at 5:00 PM. Thank you.